Finally, I ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Don Cummings.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg is out. Craig Malodra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Jim Decker.
Here.
Robert Swanson. Here. Just for the record, ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Kilburg is traveling on business this evening. His intention was to join us via telephone, which is permitted under Illinois statute. However, his dinner has been rescheduled and therefore conflicts with this meeting, so he will not be joining us electronically. We begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask an old dear friend who happens to live across the street, Mr. Steve Persinger, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. We're at item four, ladies and gentlemen. Item four is amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening from any member of the council or requests for an amendment from any member of the audience? Seeing none, hearing none. Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Marx makes the second. Questions or comments regarding the omnibus agenda? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Craig Malodra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Decker.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We move down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate, available in our packet, on our website for our consideration.
Total bills for payment, $2,918,962.01.
Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as read. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Marx. Any questions or comments on the bills as presented? Hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Craig Malodra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Decker.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
The motion to pay the bills, which is item number 10, passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absence. We skip down to Committee of the Whole items of business, and you will notice that all items are marked with an asterisk, therefore they are already approved. So, we skip to item number 12, presentation of ordinances, petitions, resolutions, and bid awards. Item 12A is to approve ordinance number 2018-09, designating the property located at 4 East State Street as a historic landmark. As noted in the agenda and was as notified when the agenda was posted, a two-thirds of the Alderman holding office is required to support this recommendation. In order to put this matter on the floor, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Bruno. This matter is officially on the floor for discussion. I would like just to make a brief statement prior to opening this up for presentation by our historic planner, Mr. Lambert, who will also introduce both the applicant and those who are expressing alternative opinions who are with us this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I know all of you have received considerable correspondence regarding tonight's deliberations. I spoke at great length earlier today with Attorney Sandek. Attorney Sandek, to my left, represented the Historic Preservation Commission and, in essence, the city of Geneva during the matter we're discussing tonight throughout the Historic Preservation Committee public hearings. Therefore, he is with us this evening. Mr. Sandek has been granted authority by me and encouraged to exercise that authority when anyone is speaking, whether it be a citizen, whether it be the applicant, whether it be an objector, or whether it be a council member, that all comments made this evening are relevant to the issue at hand. That issue at hand, of course, is the landmarking of the property as referenced in the motion. We are not here to discuss tonight what could be, what should be, what might be developed on that site. We are here simply to consider the testimony in the public hearing and whether or not this body chooses to uphold the recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission or override that recommendation by the two-thirds vote as stated on the agenda. So, ladies and gentlemen, if you do hear from Attorney Sandek, you'll hear from him with my blessings, and I suspect that all of us would agree that the blessing is to ensure the integrity of the process. So with that, I introduce Mr. Michael Lambert, our Historic Preservation Planner. Mr. Lambert?
Did you want to add anything?
Mr. Lambert, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. This evening, I am bringing forward for your consideration the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission to designate 4 East State Street as a historic landmark in the city of Geneva. By way of introduction, I will share with you the process that resulted in this case being brought forward this evening. A historic landmark nomination was received on December 27, 2017. The nominator is a Geneva resident but is not an owner of the nominated property. After a timely review as required by ordinance, the submitted nomination was amended and accepted as complete on December 29, 2017. The property owner, adjoining property owners, and interested parties were duly noticed of the nomination and public hearing per the ordinance. The owner filed an objection to historic landmark designation on February 20, 2018. The Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing on February 20 of 2018 that was continued to March 20 of 2018. After the public hearing was closed, no further testimony was added to the official record. You have all received a copy of the public, I'm sorry, of the public hearing transcripts as well as the minutes of those meetings. Following the close of the public hearing, the Historic Preservation Commission deliberated and made a determination that the submitted nomination met the five standards for designation as stipulated in the city code, specifically that the nomination demonstrated historic significance for the property and that the property retained historic integrity representative of the stated period of significance circa 1846 to 1945. Therefore, the Historic Preservation Commission made a recommendation to the city council to designate the property at 4 East State Street as a historic landmark in the city of Geneva, which is brought forward for your consideration this evening. I know that both the applicant and the property owner are present and would like to speak at some point this evening. We also have images from prior presentations. If anybody would like those, they are available and can be put up on screen. So unless you have any other questions for me regarding the process, I now will turn the podium over to the applicant, Fred Zinke. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council for Mr. Lambert? Any questions from the audience for Mr. Lambert? Mr. Zinke, welcome, sir.
Thank you for having me here tonight, Mayor and Alderman. My name is Fred Zinke. I live at 314 Euclid Avenue, Geneva. I prepared and submitted the application to landmark 4 East State Street at the behest of several concerned friends who had heard that a permit had been applied for to demolish the building. I have lived in Geneva for 17 years. Before this and before retirement, I had worked for the Village of Oak Park by way of my background. And during those years, one of my, as a senior planner, excuse me, during those years, one of my primary responsibilities was as the Historic Preservation Officer for Oak Park. In that position, I did work with Oak Park Historic Preservation Commission, and I assisted property owners within the historic district. I am here tonight to present this application for landmarking 4 East State Street, also known locally as the original Mill Race Inn. This building, originally built in 1846, 172 years ago, is without doubt an integral piece of the history and the development of the city of Geneva. This is not simply a privately owned building, but is more importantly, a historic piece of Geneva dating almost to the founding of the city of Geneva, 1837 or '35, one of those two. Because I have been out of state for the month of March, enjoying myself in warm weather, and I had eye surgery last week, cataracts, another one next week, I have not been able to keep up with, keep up to date with the, I'm sorry, keep up to date nor participate in all the work that has gone on since my first meeting with the HPC in February, nor in the preparation of the materials for this evening's meeting. I have therefore asked Mr. Colin Campbell to continue with tonight's presentation. Colin has taken the leadership role during my absence, and he's done a fine job. In closing, I will note that this application fulfills all the requirements as contained in the recently amended Historic Preservation Ordinance for landmarking a privately owned building or property, even against the owner's wishes. It offers protections for the owner's rights while still providing a method to allow the city to protect its own community interests. Finally, it is important to note that landmarking this building is not a final decision on the eventual fate of the building. It does not require the owner to restore it, and the owner can reapply at any time in the future for a demolition permit. However, landmarking this building now will halt demolition and will allow us time to find a feasible way to restore and repurpose 4 East State Street, working hopefully with the property owner. I would now like to ask Colin Campbell to continue this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. My name is Colin Campbell, 18 South Sixth Street in Geneva. And if I may, since you have already received a lot of information in your packets online, I would like to hand out what I'm going to present tonight, so you can use this for further reference if you wish, if that is okay.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Attorney Sandek, upon receipt of his copy, will just take a quick purview of the material being presented. Prior to any discussion, Mr. Campbell, was it your request that this officially be entered into the record?
Yes, please.
Is this just your, basically, the speech you're going to make?
Yes.
Written out?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. As Mr. Zinke said, we believe that the building meets all of the requirements in the ordinance for landmarking. And then he's leaving it up to me to tell you how it does that. As you know, this action concerns the 1846 limestone building located at 4 East State Street and which served as an industrial building from approximately 1846 until it became the core building of the Mill Race Inn in 1933. That restaurant closed in 2011. After purchasing the property, the Shodin Corporation, actually, it's owned by the Family Foundation, indicated that they wished to demolish many additions to that original building, which was then known as the Stone Room, but they intended to preserve that original building and restore and repurpose it. On December 20, 2017, the Shodin Family Foundation filed a request to demolish this building. In a response, the group of Genevaans who are deeply concerned for the preservation of historic character filed an application to have the city landmark the building, thus halting, for the time being at least, the demolition process and hopefully give us time to work with the Shodin Corporation to see if together we might find a way to save and restore and repurpose this very historically significant structure. As many of you here tonight know only too well because you went through it, or we all went through it together, some years ago, the city requested that the historic planner review and update the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance. And after many long meetings of the Historic Preservation Committee and the city council, many rewrites, and particular attention being paid to the landmarking provisions that we are talking about tonight, the council adopted a new ordinance that offered much more protection for the property owner and made the pursuit of landmarking against the owner's wishes a much more difficult and expensive pursuit for those who wish to initiate such an action. This is not a process to be undertaken lightly. However, the right of the city to regulate what a property owner can and cannot do is very well established in zoning ordinances and building codes. The rationale for the landmarking ordinance grows out of this principle, that the owner's rights may be protected, but in exceptional circumstances, and this was a phrase directly quoted from those negotiations years ago, "The owner's rights may be protected, but in exceptional circumstances, the city has a pathway to save a historically significant structure if it deems that this is in the best interest of the city." We believe that 4 East State Street is just that, a historically significant building. The ordinance in question is designated as Section 10-6-6 of the city code, and the section that we are concerned with here tonight is 10-6-6B, Standards for Designation of Historic Landmarks. The criteria for determining the historic significance of a building are from national and state standards. It is my understanding that in this particular matter, the 17 standards in five different categories, but there are 17 separate hurdles that we have to clear here, that are listed in this section is all that the council has asked by ordinance to consider in determining whether this property should or should not be designated a landmark. We believe that this application, taken in its entirety, clearly demonstrates that the building does indeed easily fulfill each of these requirements, and that is why I am here now. I would like to go through this with you, requirement by requirement. In this document, I note where, in our landmarking application, each of the standards is addressed. In the interest of time, I will mention only where the proof of each standard can be found, and that's why I gave you a copy, because you can go back through it and check this against the application. I will mention only where the proof of each standard can be found, but I'll be glad to go into detail on any specific matter that you wish to examine further at the end of my presentation. Answers to the criteria cited in the ordinance are found in the three sections of the application for landmarking. The first section in your packet online is the background section, which was written by staff and is the usual, the usual presentation by staff in these matters to give the council the background on the issue at hand. I will label that B, and you'll see where we're going with that. The second is the nomination form itself that was filled out by Mr. Zinke. That will be N for nomination. The third is the evolution and preliminary historic evaluation of the building. That's the final part of the application. That is E. This final part was compiled by the staff in 2014 before the property was acquired by the Shodin Foundation and before any demolition on the property took place. So here's how I would like you to read this. The references that follow here should be read this way. For example, B-2 would be background, page two. N, number seven, would be the nomination form, item seven. E3,23 would be the evaluation, pages three and 23. So I'm going to compare each standard and show you where we prove it in the application. Again, please note that the evaluation section was written before the demolition of the mostly wooden structures that were added onto the original stone building that we're discussing tonight. The evaluation's frequent references to the condition of, quote, "the Mill Race Inn" mostly refer to those additions to the original building, most of which were wood, which have since been demolished. Okay, these are the criteria put forth in the city ordinance for the determination of landmarking. One, the property is located within the corporate boundary of the city of Geneva. The building in question is located in the extreme northwest corner and occupies a very small portion of the property now owned by the Shodin Family Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation, and which is designated by the Kane County Tax Assessor's PIN as 1202-353-008. The building itself is popularly known as 4 East State Street. Those are all demonstrated in background, B1, nomination, item one. The property is at least 30 years old. This building was constructed about 1846. Background, page two. Evaluation, page three. Property possesses integrity of design, materials, workmanship, setting, location, feeling, and association. These are all separate things, and the state and national standards for evaluating all of these fills many pages. I'm trying to condense it as much as possible. Integrity here does not mean structural integrity. It means integrity as a historical structure. This is an excellent example of a vernacular industrial building of a type that was popular in that era. There are very few left in northern Illinois. Reference B2, N7, E3, 23. Although it has undergone changes over its 170-plus years, as must be expected in a building this old, a significant proportion, about 82 percent, of the original walls of the structure remain today. Background, two and three. Evaluation, 22 and 23. The current shed roof dates from about 1868. Evaluation, six. Over the years, there have been many modifications to this building, and this is something that I think is very important for you to note. In Section 10-6-4A4 of the city ordinance, you'll find this, and I quote directly, "Changes which may have taken place in the course of time are evidence of the history and development of a building, and further that changes, these changes may have acquired significance in their own right, and this significance shall be recognized and respected." This is directly from the Secretary of the Interior's Guidelines for the Preservation of Historic Properties. The major changes that have taken place in this building over the years was the conversion from an industrial building into the Mill Race Inn, and that is indeed a significant part of the building's history. So the changes that will be discussed later on this evening are not an impediment but are rather a, an encouragement to landmarking. Materials. The building is constructed of native limestone from a nearby quarry. Background, two, N7, evaluation, two and three. This building is a stellar example of the use of available local materials in construction at that time. Workmanship. The building is a typical of vernacular industrial buildings of that time and place. Background, page two. Evaluation, 21. The fact that it has stood for 170 years attests to the workmanship involved as well as its importance as the main room of the Mill Race Inn. Setting. The building, the location of this building, just south of State Street and on the Mill Race that is powered by local industry, is in the heart of early Geneva. Nomination, number one, and numerous references throughout the entire application. It is very near the probable site of Harrington's Ford, the basis for the founding of the city of Geneva in the first place. This building is one of perhaps three remaining buildings in Geneva that at one time used the power of the river to run its machinery. The other two, Riverside Banquets and the Harrington Inn, have been restored and repurposed. Feeling. The building as it stands today unmistakably evokes a long past era, the very birth of industry in Geneva, followed by decades of the core of the finest restaurant in the area. When the current building is viewed from the east or the west on State Street, one can clearly see the very same building that is pictured in the late 1800s photographs that were taken from those same locations. Background, page four. Evaluation, page seven. Those photographs are all in your packet. And today, when viewed from the south, one can see the building as it looked in the 1922 photograph that is, the comparison there is background four and evaluation nine. Looking at that building, you can see what was built in 1846, and you can also see the Stone Room of the Mill Race Inn. Association. The building as it now stands not only has a strong association with industry and commerce in 19th century Geneva, but also is the core, the Stone Room, of the Mill Race Inn, one of the most popular restaurants in the western suburbs for decades in the 20th century. Background, two and three, and almost the entire evaluation shows that. Possesses one or more of the following demonstrations of significant, or I'm sorry, four. Embodies such other qualities and characteristics as in the judgment of the commission should be considered for the designation of a landmark. That's a judgment that you have to make, and that is something that's wide open for you. Five. Possesses one or more of the following demonstrations of significance, a broad cultural, political, economic, or social association with the historic development of the nation, state, or community. We'll stick with the community on this. The building, during its many iterations as a factory of one sort or another, it was, we believe, a paper mill, which was very important in small towns in the Middle West when they were being founded, a wagon shop, wagon paint shop, a cooperage, any number of other things before it became a restaurant. And then, as a popular restaurant, contributed much to the economic development of Geneva over the 100 years encompassed by this application. As a restaurant, it also contributed significantly to the cultural and social life of Geneva. After its life as an industrial site, it truly became the place where friends meet. And there is a photograph in the back of the last page of the evaluation that shows that written on a lintel over a window in the room. Identification with a historic person or an important event in national or state or local history. Julius and Edward Alexander arrived in Geneva in 1837, more or less, as best we can figure out. Background, two. Evaluation, one and two. Julius particularly founded, helped to found the Methodist Church in Congregation Geneva. The Alexander brothers, working together, acquired considerable land along the river and constructed the building in question around 1846. They operated several enterprises vital to the early commercial development of Geneva. Skipping ahead several decades, in 1878, Julius Alexander of Geneva is described as being, quote, "one of the country's most honored and worthy citizens," one of the counties' most honored and worthy citizens today that represented the old families of Kane County. That reference is not in our evaluation, our application, but I think it's interesting to show that this was an important person. That comes from Gibbons' book, The Founders of Early History of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois, page 414. page four fourteen. There are twenty-five pages in this book dedicated to describing Alexander's activities and contributions to early Geneva. I think he qualifies as an historically important person. In the period between 1846, a number of other prominent Geneva businessmen owned this building for various enterprises. In 1933, Kate Raftery encouraged and supported Ann Forsyth in the leasing of the building and establishing the Mill Race Inn. Kate Raftery is a historic treasure in Geneva. She founded the Little Traveler, the foundation of our Third Street Business District. She participated and was a moving force in developing River Lane into an attractive residential area and encouraged, mentored, and supported many men and women in their business cultural endeavors in Geneva. Evaluation, page eleven. Distinguishing characteristics of an architectural type inherently valuable for the study of a period's style, method of construction, or use of indigenous materials or craftsmanship. The early vernacular structures such as this one represent the typical type of small, humble, simple building of that time and place. Few have survived, and they are treasured historic resources. Evaluation, page twenty-one. This building has been nominated to be named as one of the ten most endangered historic sites in Illinois. D. The notable work of a master builder, designer, or architect whose work and/or activity has significantly influenced a period of Geneva's development. While Julius and Edward Alexander may not be considered master builders, the simple feat of a pioneer moving into a relatively wilderness area and constructing a native stone building that has survived for a hundred and seventy years and served so many purposes is, I think, a notable achievement. In 1933, the bottle, the building was remodeled to become the Mill Race Inn by August Wilson, one of the most highly regarded builders in the history of Geneva. These, along with later modifications to the building, including the fireplace, play an important role in the continuing history of that building as it became the kitchen and fabled stone room of the inn. And once again, I just want to mention, changes like that are a part of the history. They are not a detriment. An improvement embodying all or part of the above characteristics which is subject to encroachment of detrimental influences, I think demolition is a detrimental influence. As it is with everything, things change with time. These changes are a part of the living history of the object in question and add to, rather than detract, from its significance. Should this building be demolished, all of that history outlined in this application will be lost. Again, I refer to the city ordinance that state that these modifications to the building are not detrimental, but rather an important part. An improvement of historic architectural or cultural significance which is threatened with demolition by public or private action, obviously. The most important improvement in the history of the Alexander Building is its conversion in 1933 into what was to become one of the most popular and treasured restaurants in the western suburbs. At a brown bag presentation on the history of the Mill Race Inn held at the Geneva History Museum in January 2014, many in attendance recounted working often their very first jobs at the Mill Race Inn, and many others recalled celebrating important family events in the building in question. Literally, thousands of people living in this area have fond memories of the Mill Race Inn. This is the improvement on the Alexander Building that is threatened. Finally, an improvement with other qualities and characteristics that, in the judgment of the commission, should be considered for the designation of a historic landmark. Again, the early history of a simple industrial building that was later converted into the core of an incredibly popular restaurant noted for its fine dining, sophisticated ambience is a history that is in the importance of this building. As you know, the recommendation for landmarking a building requires that it meets most of these seventeen requirements that are found in the five categories listed above. I believe that we have shown that, in fact, the 1846 Alexander Building meets all of these criteria. And one addition which I did not note in here, in 1952, this building, while it was in the middle of all of the additions, the building itself that we're discussing, was awarded a historic plaque by the Geneva Historical Society of that time. While not mentioned specifically in the criteria, I believe it's also important to note that both the background and evaluation sections of the application stress the ways in which saving this building might fit into Geneva's strategic planning. I'll leave that for you to take a look at.
Mr. Campbell, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
And I hesitate to do this, but I appreciate that you previewed us with your speech. With all due respect, the, the next page frankly is not part of the record at HPC.
Yes.
And what I was going to admonish everyone, our, the council's purview right now is to stay within the record adduced at HPC.
Okay.
That's the record that this council sits frankly in judgment of.
Okay.
So if you could wrap up, because I think this whole page is extraneous to be polite.
Yeah, I'll leave that, I'll leave that for the council to read or not read as they wish.
Perfect.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say and reiterate that the reason that we have brought this action in the first place is simply to try to buy time, to see if we can work with Shodin Corporation to find a way to make it feasible financially to find a way to restore and repurpose the building. They can always come back for another application for demolition if we fail in that effort.
Mr. Attorney?
So, real briefly, thank you, Mr. Campbell. The council's role, unlike what you typically do is when you act in a legislative role. You're looking at ordinances passing, ordinances considering language. Today, you're sitting in a quasi judicial function. You're not an advocate, but rather you're taking the code as it exists and looking at the criterion and making determinations based on your judgment whether it fits or not. So with all due respect to the gentleman that just spoke, what could happen, what should happen, what he'd like to see happen frankly is not germane to your obligation. Yours is to simply sit in judgment and determine based on the rec, record adduced below and as you hear it today, does the application fit the ordinance? And you go through it, and you, it's like calling balls and strikes. That's what you're doing today. We're not advocating, we're acting as a quasi judicial body. And I think that's important to kind of keep in the back of your mind as you listen further as well.
Ms. McCracken, I understand you're present this evening to represent the property owner. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm always happy to be here. My name is Kate McCracken, and while I am happy to be here, I think if, as you've heard, might have noted in the record, on behalf of the property owner, and I want to be clear who the property owner is, because as I will mention throughout this process, there's been a fair amount of what appears to me to be a little bit of misinformation. The property owner is the Shodin Family Foundation. The Shodin Family Foundation is a not-for-profit. It is truly a foundation, and a lot of times when we're talking about this application and we're talking about this process, it gets thrown into a Shodin bucket that I would ask all of you to take very specific note, that we need to be clear on who the actual owner of the property is. As I've said, as you might have noted in the record, I don't believe on behalf of the owner that we should even be here. And I'm going to stand up here and I'm going to say some things that I understand that many of you don't necessarily want to hear, but they need to be said and they need to be clear and they need to be identified for the record. There is a significant amount of legal impact of everything that you do here tonight, and it's important that we take a few minutes and listen and really think about what I'm saying and what we've submitted before those decisions are made. First, I'm going to say this and I'm going to continue saying this as long as I have to. While with all due respect to everyone involved in this process, and while I understand how this process works, the fact of the matter is, this entire process was flawed. The city, as you know, has a historic preservation ordinance. I know there's been a fair amount of long and intense discussion about that historic preservation ordinance. I actually remember, as I sure mayor does, when our first historic preservation ordinance was actually passed by the city. But irrespective of whether we agree or disagree with the substance of the ordinance, there are specific requirements in that ordinance. And irrespective of who you are, whether you're an individual, an entity, a developer, a property owner, you have to comply with the requirements of that actual ordinance. Otherwise, why have the ordinance or why have those requirements? So I want to just talk a little bit about the requirements of the ordinance. The applicant, the applicant, and, and again, and with all due respect to everyone involved in this process, the applicant was Mr. Zinke. However, as the process evolved, the applicant became, on the record, Mr. Campbell. That's fine, except that Mr. Campbell never signed the application. So we have an applicant who has identified himself as an applicant who's never signed the application. Again, I understand how some people don't think that's an important issue. I know we, as lawyers, tend to think that's a very significant issue. And again, it's the same kind of issue when we talk about a legal, a legal description. I understand that Historic Preservation Commission was not terribly concerned about the legal description. Because this is what I do, I happen to be very concerned about the legal description. The ordinance is very clear. You have to submit a legal description of the structure to be landmarked. The applicant chose not to do so. That was his choice. He had every right to do so, he chose not to. Again, we can ignore that for purposes of this discussion. The ordinance requires that the application be deemed complete before there's a public hearing. I can assure you that we, as the owner of the property, did not believe the application was complete, and there was nothing in the record until the second public hearing that identified what was allegedly a deemed complete application. The fact of the matter is, if you look at the record and you look at the objection of the owner, there are specific instances in which that application, this application can't be deemed complete, not the least of which is what we now identify as an applicant who never signed it. This is a very different example of a third party coming in to landmark a piece of property owned by someone else. And the reason it's very different is because in this instance, you have identifiable issues in the record that really call into question the entirety of this process. I don't think you've been faced with that before. We have identifiable defects in the application itself. We have an applicant who admittedly chose not to, for reasons that were stated here tonight, chose not to follow the specific requirements of the application guidelines set forth in the Historic Preservation Ordinance itself. Really, on that basis alone, I should be able to stop here, and we shouldn't be here. The application should have been denied at historic preservation, and we should not be here. But I recognize that we're here, and therefore I'm going to ask you to consider performing at least one specific task tonight that I need to have on the record, which is, I need, and I am requesting you tonight, to go on record as identifying your determination as to whether the process has been, that has been pursued by this applicant and the application that has been submitted, has been submitted and been completed in accordance with the ordinance. So while I do not legally believe we should be here, we are, and I know we need to talk about the five factors. I certainly have not been privy to Mr. Campbell's submittal tonight. I obviously haven't seen it. He didn't give me a copy. I haven't reviewed it. I would love to do all those things, but I think I can probably condense our comments into one specific word. Obviously, the factors that we're talking about tonight contemplate a fair amount of subjectivity, but there still needs to be a reasonable consideration of the facts in the record. And I'm going to give you a couple examples, and Mr. Patzelt is going to give you a couple of examples of a fair amount of misinformation that's sort of been sliding through this The National Historic Landmarks Program itself states that any property whose historic features have been lost and then reconstructed are not eligible for landmarking status. So the application itself, if you actually look at the application and you go page by page, I can identify for you on virtually every single page the number of substantial and material alterations that have been made to this property. Secondarily, you have definitions under our own ordinance. Irrespective of what the national standards are, we have specific provisions. Architectural integrity or historic integrity, the architectural integrity in particular talks about an evaluation of whether changes over time have resulted in undue adverse impacts on historically significant features of the building. I would just ask all of you to consider that for just a minute. I have all of the same memories of the Mill Race Inn. I spent a significant amount of time growing up and spending time there. All of those memories are wonderful, and I, I love them. But wonderful memories does not make a historic structure, nor does it give a third party the legal right to determine what happens with that piece of property, particularly when that third party hasn't followed the legal requirements of the ordinance that we're sitting here tonight reviewing. We can't simply categorize the changes over time as part of the history. Then why, if that's the case, if that's what we're going to do and we're going to say that changes over time are all part of the historic nature of this building, that's fine, then why do we even have a period of significance? The applicant is required to identify a period of significance. We've identified the period of significance, and if you actually look in the record, there's at least three different places where it says that building in 1846 no longer exists. And yet somehow we've morphed into the building from 1846 that no longer exists, that's been modified on twenty separate occasions, substantially modified, that has suffered significant undue adverse impacts. Somehow all of that contributes to its history. We should ignore what the ordinance says and deem it a landmark. That's simply not what the ordinance says. So if that's the case, then why have an ordinance at all? From a practical perspective, we also have consistently maintained one fundamental issue with this process and with this application. As you heard Mr. Campbell and Mr. Zinke testify, their goal here tonight isn't to landmark this building, it's to buy time. I'm not, I'm not regurgitate, I'm not, you know, mincing anyone's words. I'm using what those I'm using what those words they stood here and said today. We just want to buy time. Our purpose in doing this, as they testified under oath, was to stop the demolition. I need somebody, all of you, any of you, to tell me where in the ordinance it says the historic preservation ordinance is supposed to be used, not to landmark a building, not because we believe in good faith this building should be landmarked, but because we want to stop somebody from doing something. So I thought the city attorney did a great job talking to you about this being a quasi-judicial function. As such, you guys have an obligation to actually look at the facts. And those facts have to be consistent, uncontradicted facts, and they have to be facts that are taken into account within the context of the ordinance itself. The fact is, we're here because the applicant wanted to buy time. We're not here because the 1846 structure even exists. It's because we all have great memories of the Mill Race Inn, which no longer exists, which we can all acknowledge no longer exists. And instead, we're now here so that someone else can say, "Property owners, we know you own the property. We know that you've applied for a demolition permit, and we've decided that we want to stop you. And so we are going to use the Historic Preservation Ordinance, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the City Council of Geneva to pursue a ruse so that a piece of property cannot be demolished, and all of you are being asked to participate in that." And I don't believe that that's what the ordinance allows. I certainly don't think that's a precedent that the city would really want to follow. And at the end of the day, I think it's important that you actually look at the true facts and the true evidence, and not a bit of the misinformation that's been generated. One of the things I'd like to do, before I conclude, is I'd like to have Mr. Patzelt identify some of the facts, the real facts, that need to be corrected for the record so that we can all go forward. Thank you. David?
Good evening. My name is David Patzelt, 77 North First Street, Geneva, Illinois, 60134. Didn't know I was going to speak and give you some corrections of facts, but a few come to mind that you've heard this evening. And I often talk about, at many of the hearings that you have before you and the plan commission, that being sworn in. And unfortunately, nobody was sworn in tonight, and perhaps if somebody's sworn in, they'll think twice about statements that they've made. But one of the statements that was made this evening, and it's been repeated several times, is what our commitment was for enduring demolition of the Greater Mill Race Inn. This evening, Mr. Campbell indicated that we committed to restoring and repurposing the building. We did not. The newspapers are here. The newspapers ran a story several years ago indicating that both myself, and then a quote from your own staff member, that Shodin's purpose for the initial demolition was to peel back the original structure, see what remained of a potential 1846 structure, and then see what could be done, if it could be repurposed or reused. We did that. We've stood behind that commitment, and we have concluded that it could not be repurposed or reused, and we worked with other consultants that have identified that as well, including architects and planners. And I have provided that information to you over the weekend. Some other mistruths or unfortunate situations is that, as I understood from the beginning, that there was one applicant, and Mr. Campbell was not an applicant. Mr. Campbell reached out to me after the landmarking application was submitted to the city, and had suggested that he wanted to be, I'll call it, a peacemaker, and to try and accommodate both sides and work a solution to this landmarking. We met for probably an hour to two hours. We talked about some of the issues that have been encountered since we peeled back the structure. Mr. Campbell acted as though he learned of those and was not aware of those in the past.
Mr. Patzelt, can I, same parameters, I understand that Ms. McCracken kind of puts you on the spot. Lawyers do that sometimes, but if we could confine ourselves to the record...
Yeah, and I think where I'm going with it is that, as much as you've received something in writing from Mr. Campbell, he wasn't in the...
Right, and you'll know that I actually stopped him from going extraneous to the record, which is the same courtesy I'd like you to extend to this council if you could. That would be great. Thank you.
Terrific. So I guess I'll just conclude that with, I'm questioning the validity and accuracy of the testimony that you've received this evening from Mr. Campbell. When Mr. Campbell has sat in my office and suggested that for a month or so, he was going to try to get the group together and see if we could jointly meet and work out a resolution. And over repeated requests, he was unable to get that group together, but now he requests you to support him in buying time to further negotiate and find some solution to solving the structure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patzelt. Ms. McCracken, anything else from...
No, I think we're good for now.
Okay.
I'm certainly happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Mr. Lambert, is there anything else from your perspective? Okay. From the dais, any questions or comments? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor.
Then I will obviously turn over to our guests this evening as well, if you'd like to ask any questions or seek clarification.
I might bounce back and forth from notes I took from the commentary and some of my previous thinking here. Well, this is interesting. We went through that arduous process of updating the Historic Preservation Commission, and this in, what, going on 38 years. This is the second time it's come before the city council to make this type of determination. I do appreciate and want to reiterate the ground rules here, that today is a meeting to discuss that this application meets the standards for landmarking. It's not about reuse, not about structural integrity, not about economic hardship, not about the aesthetics as it sits today. This is a bifurcated process in a larger development discussion. All those things are addressed at the next discussion. To date, we haven't seen any plans for the property from Shodin Corp., the Shodin Foundation. But in terms of where we pursue this, we, as the council, have to make value judgments. We have to weigh what's there with what might go there. And I only bring that up because of what's in the public record. We don't have both parts of those discussion, so I don't think we're prepared to make a judgment on this building in the absence of that future information. We do have a historic asset situated on this site. Geneva's bread and butter comes in no small part from how we attend to our historic character. Other communities in the region still look to Geneva as a touchstone for how we leverage historic value or historic character for our economics and prosperity. We do have to be careful, though. Geneva has, oh, I will be asking for some photos later. I'll give you the high sign, Pete, behind the curtain. We do need to be careful. Geneva has approved a lot of demolitions in its history, in the historic district, while other communities still recognize this as pretty important. As was already brought up here once, is, as we go down this road of demolition, we more and more threaten our ability to maintain our CLG status. So to this application, I'll probably bounce around to some of my notes and some of my previous thoughts. I don't think anything brought up by Ms. McCracken materially undermines the application. It certainly meets the standards, I think, quite handily. It's among the oldest stone buildings in the city, and from our earliest founding years, almost extinct along the Fox River. We can't, I can't think of another similar building from pre-civil war tied to water power, and we have one of them. It sits on the race in the river that would have powered the mill, hence the Mill Race As I said, it does meet the technical requirements set out in the ordinance. We've got landmark properties in the city that don't come close to checking all the boxes that this building does. Architectural integrity is, I think, often confused with pretty or attractive. But the reality is, I think it's been well explained, that if you had a time traveler from 1840 or 1850 or 1860, and you plopped them down on State Street, would they recognize the building? Unquestionably, yes. So I think it does have architectural integrity. Now, I've heard some arguments against landmarking. One of them is, it hasn't been seen in 75 years, so why is it historic now? Well, I use the example, we hadn't seen King Tut's tomb in 3,000 years. That's historic. Not to make equivalency, but not having seen it for a while doesn't bear on whether it's historic or not. And again, only because it's in the public record, there is a reference to fire damage. Now, this is where I'll ask the man behind the curtain to bring up some pictures that I have. You there, Pete?
Is it something in the record or extraneous to the record?
It's talking about how, it's a reference to, they called out fire damage in the public record. I wanted to demonstrate that there's many buildings with fire damage.
So you're going to show a different photo, a photo of a different structure that has fire damage?
Yes.
Okay, that's not in the public record, Alderman.
Okay.
I mean, you can certainly talk about it, to the extent you think fire damage is insignificant or significant, but showing a different structure isn't in the record. It's not part of it.
Okay, very well. So, okay, so there were, there, I would, it wouldn't surprise me if a third of old structures in downtown had fire damage in the attic. My own house has far worse fire damage than 4 East State Street. Again, it was put in the record that it's not attractive, but we're not debating aesthetics tonight, and it doesn't have any bearing on what the building will look like. We'll skip the photographs, Pete, but there are examples of other buildings considered teardowns that are now valuable historic assets within the city. Now, let's go back to some of my points here. The point on Mr. Campbell not signing, the, that's, I couldn't consider that anything less than spurious. I mean, it seems immaterial to me as to how many people work with Mr. Zinke in forwarding Legal description is, I think, is important, and I'll talk about that in a bit. It being modified, I'm perfectly fine with that. I think that's an important precept, that all those modifications do add to the history. To think that buying time is somehow a devious, well, maybe not the right word, but some type of nefarious plan, it is. That's what the process is. It's to deliver this to the greater development discussion, like any property within the historic district, so that we can weigh those types of, make those value judgments. So getting back to the property description, I think the legal description here, just pulled off probably the city or the county website, I imagine, is too large. I don't think that's the intent of the applicant, and I think there's, I think there should be a process to subdivide this, to unencumber the remainder of that property. I don't know what the best way of doing that is. I don't know if it means tabling this.
Can I just make one spot?
Hold on, Mr. Zinke, one moment, please. Mr. Bruno has the floor still.
So I don't know if that's a matter of tabling it. Maybe that's a question for Director DeGroot, or that we make an amendment to the motion that landmarking is dependent, or the right term, to pending successful subdivision of the property. Am I going off the rails here? No? No, okay. Also, I fully recognize the complexity of this property. I mean, there's flood plains, there's vehicular access, it's just weird generally. I think that will all be addressed in the subsequent development PUD discussion. So again, to reinforce it, we're only discussing tonight whether the application is valid and whether they meet the intent of that landmark application. Landmarking only gives us that additional layer of review and is not a guarantee of that it won't be demolished. We've, cities demolished plenty of properties before, and it could happen again. But absent a public safety concern, landmarking this building seems a no-brainer to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. Can we please get clarification? The HPC already ruled that the application was sufficient, so we're not here to talk about that.
Alderman, you can. The HPC made a recommendation, I think it was four to one, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And they felt the application was sufficient. They took it and utilized their judgment in determining that the code applied, and they went through some criterion. But theirs is a recommendation. It's not binding on this tribunal. You sit, to use a little bit of Latin, de novo. This is an original proceeding, and you determine anew. This may factor in your decision, or it may not, but it's certainly your call.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I believe we're here to simply judge whether or not the criteria are met for the landmark designation. Thank you.
Would you like to add any Latin to that?
It works.
From the council. Alderman Maladra, you had a question?
I do.
One moment, Alderman. One moment, Alderman Malagre, a quick question on process. Okay, Alderman Malagre, then Alderman Marks.
So, I think this is kind of, maybe it's kind of what Becky was getting at. So, Kate asked if this council is gonna make a statement saying that we confirm for the record that the process that was followed is consistent with our ordinance. And so, my question for you is whether or not we can make that determination tonight, or whether you need to go off and review it in legal terms, or anything.
No, with all due respect to council, that, she certainly can ask that, but your job is to apply the ordinance. You can determine in your singular determination, or collectively, that you don't believe the application should be, or should pass muster, but that's a judgment call you make. But I'm gonna ask, is it Pete back there? If he can put Section 10, 6, 6, Item B on the board, that's exactly what you're to do, is to apply your judgment in determining whether the application, and how you compare it to the ordinance. Does it match, meet, exceed, or not? And you can, you can start at that threshold question, and that, that may determine what you do. Or you can move on, and again, apply the ordinance to the facts as presented.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Collins is putting that information on the screen. Alderman Malagre, do you wish to wait for that to appear before continuing?
That answered my question.
Alderman Marks?
My questions are probably to Mr. Lambert for some explanation. Is, is that okay?
Certainly.
I, I guess, if you could help, because I think I know what it is, but, but probably from you, could you really explain what the Sandburn Fire Insurance Maps are, and, and how they were used, and since this property fell off of it, does that mean it didn't exist anymore? I guess I'm, it's mentioned throughout everything, that those maps, so if you could give us a little history on those.
That's an excellent question. Sandburn Fire Insurance Maps were created for a specific purpose. They were created by the Sandburn Fire Insurance Company to identify buildings that could or should be worthy of being insured. Many people believe that they, they surveyed every single building in a community. That's not true. They surveyed buildings they deemed were worthy of insurance. So, in Geneva, for instance, there's several sections that show no buildings whatsoever through the whole series of Sandburn Maps, but we know there were actually buildings there. The Sandburn surveyors determined that they were not insurable or not worthy of being insured. So, the Sandburn Fire Insurance Maps were created every few years. They would update them and make determinations. Going to the question about, you were saying that, mentioned that it's, I've been identified in the record that the building simply wasn't there, it was listed as ruins. That's important to understand how Sandburn made their definitions. Ruins meant that they were not in a condition to be insured. A building had been there, but it was not in a condition to be insured. So, it may have appeared on an earlier map, but when they went to survey it, it was no longer recognizable or, or functional as to what it had been. That does not mean the building disappeared. It just means it was not an occupiable building, therefore it was not going to be insured. So, it's, if you look at insurance maps, they will identify buildings that are being under construction, not insurable. They'll identify buildings that have been, sometimes identify buildings that have been demolished, or parts of buildings have been demolished, or that are undergoing demolition while, while they're doing their survey work. So, again, they were, the maps were designed for a very specific purpose, for insurance purposes, and tried to document what was, what was being seen. The other thing that is important to understand is that, in those days, they had scribes basically going out in the field, and what they recorded might not get put into a map for up to 24 months. So, a lot of things could happen in between. So, for instance, if a building was being constructed or being rehabbed, it might have been marked in the field as not being insurable, but by the time the map came out, the building may have actually been in place. So, you have to understand fire insurance maps within their context of what their purpose was.
So, if they didn't list it, you said that it was just not inhabitable, or, or was ruined? I mean, does that mean that significant work had to be done to, to get it back to be inhabitable? I, I guess...
The, the Sandburn Maps did not record the level of deterioration on a building.
Okay.
Okay. The, the, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. That's fine. That's all, I just wanted some clarification, Mayor.
The only question?
Alderman Ruby?
Could, could that have been a period where there was no occupant of the building, and that's why it weren't insured? Is that a possibility?
Correct. It could, it, it could be simply that was abandoned.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
After that period, though, where it disappeared from the Sandburn mapper was listed as ruins, it reappeared in our history as having businesses occupying it.
Correct.
So, we know, and the, those businesses occupied it during the period that we're calling historically significant, and that is pre-1946. So, it, it was off the map in 1891, but then we know that there were businesses, say, the Mann Company owned it later on in the 1910s, so we know that it was still a structure during this historical period. So, is it really moot that it disappeared in one particular or a couple Sandburn Maps?
Again, you need to, you, you need to look at the maps in total, the shape of the building that was there prior to the 1891 map that people are referring to as ruins.
Can I jump in real quick? That's your call. That's exactly the use of your judgment to determine. It may not be for someone else, it may be for you, but that's exactly the collective wisdom the council has to determine in its exercise of discretion.
Sorry, Michael.
That's all right.
Alderman Swanson still has the floor. Anyone else from the council?
So, I've, I've been reviewing the ordinance that we spent 12 to 18 months constructing just a few years ago, seems like yesterday. With, with the generous support of, of public and municipal and private professionals, and I, I think we came up with something very good. 10 dash 6 dash 6 is up on the screen now, it, starting with letter B. We can't get all the way down to 5G, but we can get pretty darned close. This is what we're using to judge whether this is going to be a, whether we landmark this building. Nothing else. If, I'm a big believer in, if, if, if we don't like the law, then we need to change the law, but we need to work within the law that we created for ourselves within the last 24 months. It's only fair to the applicant, only fair to the property owners, all that. Item one, corporate boundaries of the city? Absolutely. Item two, 30 years old? No problem there. Possesses, item three, possesses integrity of design, materials, workmanship, setting, location, feeling, and association. That word "and" is interesting. If it said "or," it'd be a very different sentence. That's item number three. Item number four, embodies other qualities and characteristics in the judgment of the commission. It's very qualitative, I suppose it does. Number five, it needs to possess one or more of items A through G. And I think it does. So, where's my question? My question is, on item number three, possesses integrity of design, materials, workmanship, setting, location, feelings, and association. It needs to have all those. What's a definition of integrity of materials? What does that mean? The National Park Service, from which this is drawn, says materials are the physical elements that were combined or deposited during a particular period of time, and in a particular pattern or configuration form a historic property. It goes on to say, the property must retain the key exterior materials dating from the period of its historic significance. If the property has been rehabilitated, the historic materials and significant features must have been preserved. The property must also be an actual historic resource, not a recreation. A recent structure fabricated to look historic is not eligible. Likewise, a property whose historic features and materials have been lost and then reconstructed is usually not eligible. So, that's interesting. What are the materials that are in the building? And Colin addressed this in a very creative way. On page two, bottom, item three, possesses integrity of design materials. Letter A, about 82% of the original walls of the structure remains today. And I'm curious, does 82% of the original walls exist, having been rebuilt? Or 82% of the original material of the walls? The next page, item B, materials. The building is constructed of native limestone from a nearby quarry, stellar example of the use of available local materials. So, I take it there is some limestone. I also take it this is an item B, that that material is necessary, not just sufficient, but necessary. But I would ask, as I'm looking for adherence to, item three, possesses integrity of design, materials, workmanship, I would ask about materials. Is the existing structure made of the original materials? Or is the existing structure made of materials brought in later to recreate the look of the structure? And if I don't get a good answer on that, in my mind, the whole thing fails, because item three is necessary. Items five, A through G, one, is sufficient. Items one, two, three, and four are necessary under the ordinance that we all created. We need to hit those, and I'm very curious about the materials. And I'd like to hear from Michael Lambert about that. I'd like to hear from Colin. I'd like to hear from the representatives from Shodene. And convince me one way or another, guys, because that's my sticky point.
And Mr. Lambert, we're not asking you to provide a professional opinion, but a factual response that was, we assume, reflected in the record during the HPC discussions, shared in public testimony.
And in that narrow scope, to answer your question as succinctly as possible, the earliest photograph we have of the building is dated to about 1893 or '94. That was in part of the record. It's been in all the information you've received, and that stone building is in that 1893 image. So, the period of significance, which was questioned earlier, why you have a period of significance, is because you want to look at the changes over time and the construction during that time period. So, to answer your question, this limestone that was there in the earliest photographic record that we have, 1890s, is what you see today.
And Alderman Cummings still has the floor.
Yeah, I think you asked a three-part.
Correct.
There were other parts to that question, but...
And what percentage? In other words, at absurdum, one pebble of the original structure is still maintained in the wall, or 100% of the original material is still in the wall? Where are we along that line?
I don't think anybody in this room could honestly answer that question.
I can.
Well, I, I, if I may finish?
Of course, please do.
One of the things that was brought up in, in testimony is that some of the material has been apparently replacement material. However, it's also been referred to, there were fires there. Understanding how limestone acts under fire, what was being proposed or being identified as replacement material is actually material that's been subjected to fire. I'm not gonna go any further in that discussion unless people ask me to, but 40 years in the preservation field, I can tell you how limestone acts under intense heat.
Let me make one comment, because this is absolutely getting in the weeds, but six weeks ago, we spent at least an hour talking about somebody in Geneva, in the historic district, wanting to put up an aesthetically identical but different material that didn't meet standards. And we were talking about materials. So, before we go to sleep and think, oh my God, I can't believe we're going down this path, materials are very, very important. We could lose, if we went down the path incorrectly, our certified local government designation, correct? If we allowed people to change historic structures with aesthetically identical but different materials. So, materials are important. I don't, I don't want people to, to drift on this and think that materials aren't important.
Was that a question or?
Yours. No, just a comment. Because if I, if I didn't realize that, I would be going to sleep. I want everyone to realize, this is, this is very, very important to landmarking and historic preservation.
Mr. Patzelt, I believe you, and, and just for the record, it's one point to Cummings for using Latin, zero to Ruby still, so it's like, welcomes.
That's Italian.
It was good, though. Mr. Patzelt?
The, I can, under oath, state that the 82% is vastly incorrect number as to the stone that exists there today. If you go to your packet that you have this evening, and in page 14 of 38 of the preservation, there is a photograph purposely taken of the east elevation, and I would ask you that, to give a percentage, and I believe that you would guess somewhere below 50, 60%. Then, if you go to the north elevation of the building, I believe that you're gonna guess less than 10 to 20% of that elevation is there of stone. Then, when you look at the stone, and for those of you who toured the building with myself over the last several days, it is a quilt work of a variety of different stones, as well as a common brick. And that common brick has been, is photographed on page... Yes, on page 17. The limestone that is out there, when you look closely at it, and the photographs give a little bit of justice of it, consists of a, what I'll call it, a yellow limestone, which looks perhaps to be of the original era. Then, there is an orange limestone, and that limestone is very soft, and within the package you have this evening is a photograph of a finger rubbing on that stone. These materials are very, very soft, so even the hardness or density of these stone materials are not the same, as well as the stone color is not the same. Then, there's a white stone. And then, even within those elevations where stone does exist, you can see where doorway openings were cut in and were later filled in with other types of material. So, the 82% is significantly in, off.
Alderman Bruno is asked to be recognized again, but prior to doing so for a second time, is there anyone who has not yet spoken who wishes to speak or ask any questions of either Mr. Lambert, the Shodene Family Foundation, Attorney McCracken? Without objection, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess to, I guess this would be for Michael. Of the material that is there, what percentage would you guess to be over 50 years old?
I don't think it would be fair to make that assessment. That's asking for a professional assessment. I will say that the, the building consists of above-grade and below-grade wall material, and so I think... And so I think that that has to be taken into account, because the limestone foundation is part of the wall. So the other thing is, again, by looking at the photographs that have been submitted, there were, there was a large doorway on one part of the wall that's now partly open. So again, I'm not going to sit here tonight and try to do math in my head about what percentages are left, other than if you only take the above-grade, considering that's the building, you may get less than eighty-two percent.
Yeah, I was looking at the, thank you, and you're relieved, thank you. Yeah, I was looking at those, those repairs, and again, important historic preservation precept is all those changes, all that brick infill, that is part of history. I don't, I didn't see a section that looked any newer than fifty years old, with the exception of, say, like some double-hung windows. That's it, thanks.
From the council, anyone who has not yet had the floor, interested in having the floor. To the audience, we'll recognize Mr. Campbell first, and then anyone else who wishes to address the council can certainly do so. We'll begin on the left side of the room, move back, come back to the right side of the room, move forward. Mr. Campbell?
In reference to what remains that I mentioned is in the application. This statement is in the application on page twenty-two. What remains of the Alexander Brothers' early settlement buildings? The earliest structure attributed to Julius and Edward Alexander have disappeared from the Geneva landscape. The original Alexander Brothers' blacksmith shop and so on, all of the old build, the first buildings they built are gone. However, the eighteen forty-six limestone structure, which measures approximately thirty feet by forty feet, forty-eight feet, and comprises little more than fourteen hundred square feet in the entire property, remains clearly visible within the rambling Mill Race Inn complex. Now remember, this was written before the demolition of those buildings. Identifiable today by the original limestone-bearing walls, the Alexander Brothers' eighteen forty-six manufacturing no longer retains its original roof or floor. However, that is not so much an issue of building deterioration, but a case of building evolution over time. Three of the four exterior walls of the eighteen forty-six limestone structure are visible within the present-day building. The exterior and interior faces of those walls are readily visible. However, the historic exterior face of the east wall is largely obscured from examination or observation. Unfortunately, approximately fifteen percent of the historic west wall and approximately forty percent of the historic east wall have been altered over time. The west wall loss encompasses a portion of the bearing wall and is at least one original window opening. The east wall loss incorporates a large area that was once a sizable doorway. However, an initial assessment suggests that at least eighty-two percent of the original walls as exposed in eighteen forty-six remain intact with minor modifications made for Anne Forthys Restaurant in nineteen thirty-three. And remember, as I mentioned before, modifications that are important to the history of the building should be respected and accepted and not rejected, and that is in the ordinance. So that's where those figures came from, from the application. So I would submit that both enough of the original Alexander Building and the modifications, the major modifications that were made for the Mill Race Inn are all a part of the history and part of the significance of the building by ordinance.
As promised, we'll begin with any comments from the folks joining us. We'll begin on the south side of the room. Is there anyone on the south side of the room? This gentleman in the back, please join us at the podium. And ladies and gentlemen, just a bit of housekeeping. We kindly ask that you share with us your name, providing your address is not required.
I don't mind. I'm on Hill Road.
New state law, so don't worry about it.
Adam Gibbons, Hill Road, Geneva, thirty-three West Seven Seven Seven.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. I just want to say I'm in favor of upholding the HPC's ordinances. I think they did a great job, you know, looking at the criteria, looking at the requirements. I live on the east side of Geneva, and I wrote the book that Colin Campbell referenced earlier, His Early History of Geneva. And I would say that the, there used to be a quarry on Wall Street on the east side that was likely the source of the limestone for the Alexander Building. And the quarries in Batavia, as are more widely known, were open until the late nineteenth century. So as repairs to the building would have been made, it would have been quite likely, I would think, that the limestone would be local, no matter what, that they would have gotten it from Batavia to do the repairs. So it could be that some of the limestone is not from Geneva, but is from Batavia. But regardless, it's my opinion also that a lot of the limestone there, and I don't know a percentage, but would be the original quarried stone. The east side also, as we know, lacks a historic district. The historic district ends just feet from the structure in question. And that sort of puts our side of town at a disadvantage, I would say. And this is one of the most significant buildings in Geneva, but certainly on the east side of Geneva, which was settled as early as, as the west side as well. Again, it's not a guarantee for the future of the building, but I just would hope that all the aldermen present will do what they can to give the building a chance by designated as landmarks. It's Julius Alexander, a very widely known person, as was stated throughout the county and throughout this part of the state in the nineteenth century. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. From the south side of the room, anyone wish to speak to the council, ask questions, seek clarification? From the north side of the room. Welcome.
Good evening. Mayor Burns and members of the Geneva City Council.
Could we have your name, sir? Your name, please.
My name is Bob McQuillan. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bob McQuillan. After living in Geneva for twenty years and addressing this council on several, several occasions, I'm happy to be back after a two-year hiatus. On tonight's agenda, I see several reasons why four East State Street in Geneva should not be historically landmarked. First, even if the property meets the landmark requirements, it does not mean that the property must be landmarked. Number two, currently, the property owner does not have any responsibility to retain the building in question. Number three, does the Geneva City Council have the legal right to impede on the property owner's right, no matter who is the owner? Currently, anyone can request a property to be landmarked even without the owner's request. Number four, several years ago, the property owners south of the train station made it clear that they did not want the area included as an historic district. At that time, it was the understanding that the historic district should not be increased. Number five, the current historic boundaries were established for a reason. Number six, will the landmark status harm the property owner's ability to develop the property? Only a short trip down Route Thirty-One and looking at the property at Fabian and Route Thirty-One, this has not been able to be developed since nineteen seventy-eight because of a historic landmark status. The ordinance states that the applicant is responsible for the city preservation planner's salary, for the time spent on the application, as well as other costs. My question tonight is, does the city have an estimate of what those total costs are, and has the applicant been billed? I'm probably wrong, but the agenda appears to be in error. It states that the council will approve or disapprove of the ordinance designating the property as an historic landmark. It states nothing about the application. In my opinion, it calls for a vote tonight on whether the property is a landmark or not. This topic has been bannered about since the first of the year. Why not a yes or no tonight? My wife and I have enjoyed the historic areas of the entire Fox Valley, but the question remains, when is enough enough? A small group of Geneva residents and non-residents would answer enough is never enough. Just recently, representatives of this quote-unquote "group" did not want the old Sixth Street School demolished, as well as the Coal Trap School. The owners of both properties fought the requests, and they were torn down. The new library will grace the Sixth Street School property, and the Coal Trap property will be developed when the school district needs to. My family has enjoyed many dinners at the Mill Race Inn, even my oldest son's rehearsal dinner. My wife and I enjoyed sitting on the back deck, listening to music, and watching the ducks. Never once did we go to the Mill Race Inn because of a blacksmith's shop. I ventured to guess that the vast majority of Geneva residents also did not know the shop even was there. It has been covered by the rest of the building for many years. In conclusion, the property owner clearly does not want the building to remain. They have the right to do that. It happens, if it happens to be landmarked, and the Shodene Foundation decides to never develop it, does the city really want the area of State Street and Route Twenty-Five to remain as it is today? Thank you.
Thank you. From the north side of the room.
Tom Simonian, nine twenty-one South Batavia Ave. Thank you very much. I have a procedural question. It's true that the applicant submitted for a demolition permit, and the city, the city objected to the demolition permit? Or it was issued and?
The objector made an application.
And the demolition permit was never provided?
Well, yeah, it was stayed, and there's some, there's some reasons behind that. Mr. Lambert or Mr. DeGroot, would you like to share with everybody the actual dates of submission, dates of review, dates of submission of landmarking status, the authority that the city has with respect to turning around such a request, et cetera?
I had to go through my notes to find the dates, but I believe it was December twenty-seventh of twenty seventeen that we received the demolition permit. I'm sorry, the permit application. It was not complete and ready to be issued upon receipt, and we were working back and forth with the applicant to, to get the remainder of the materials. During that time, we received the nomination for the landmark, the nomination for the landmark designation. Underneath the ordinance, that requires all work to be suspended, that would modify the proposed structure, or landmark structure, including the demolition.
Is it true, Mr. DeGroot, that upon submission of a request for a permit to demolish a structure, the city has ten days to respond to that?
To respond to the?
Demolition.
Demolition permit? We typically issue it within ten days. And it was less than ten working days, once we received the nomination for the landmark.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Simonian?
Thank you. Had the application for historic landmark designation not been submitted, would then the demolition been approved? Or is there any reason why the demolition would not have been approved?
Demolition would not be, the demolition approval and/or denial would not be before this body?
Right, that's just a, that's...
It's an administrative function.
Correct. But in all likelihood, had the application not been submitted for landmark status, the staff would have probably, or maybe probably would have, approved demolition?
I can't answer that. My suspicion is that staff would work with the applicant for that permit to ensure that the permit was in compliance with the request, and that ultimately, as we've always done, is to ensure that every, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, so that permission would be ultimately granted.
So assuming it would have been granted, and this governing body does not have anything to do with that decision, in the packet this evening, under impact of designation, it says if the nominated property is designated as historic, is a historic landmark by the Geneva City Council, then building condition, economic and/or structural feasibility and use would be considered under a separate review. Future proposed work could include stabilization, repair, rehabilitation, or demolition. So in theory, this council could provide landmark status, and the applicant could come back and submit a demolition permit?
Correct.
For demolition.
That's correct.
And the reason I'm asking if the demolition permit was approved earlier, or the likelihood of it being approved earlier, you know, this could, this could, this could be a win-win for everybody. Landmark designation and then demolition. Thank you.
One minute, Mr. McQuillan, before I see if anyone else wishes to speak. Nancy, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Leighton, and I have the Patent House in Geneva, and I'm a Geneva resident. And I, as everyone knows here, I refurbished the Patent House. It's an eighteen hundreds structure. There were a lot of challenges. Inside of the building, there's a lot of, there were a lot of integrity, things that I was insistent in keeping, and it probably cost me a lot more money. But the building is so significant to Geneva, and I think that Geneva is unique in this respect, that we have these beautiful, we do cherish our history, and I hope that you'll consider that. We're not a bunch of same, same-style houses we have. And I also live in an eighteen hundreds house in Geneva. There's a lot of character, and I, I so admire what the Shodene Foundations have done with the Harrington, the Riverside, they're beautiful buildings, and they've kept a lot of the integrity. And I hope that they would consider doing that same thing, because they've been a great contribution to Geneva in keeping a lot of the stuff. So hopefully, we can work this together and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else from the north side of the building? Mr. McQuillan? And we'll turn back to the council if that is okay?
As I just listened to the discussion, a thought popped into my head. The representative from the city said that the Shodene Foundation had requested for a permit for demolition, and it was not complete, so the city was going back and forth and discussing the permit, I'm assuming, with the Shodene Foundation. I guess my question is, how did the applicant know that a permit for demolition was submitted to the city so that he would then submit an application for landmark status? I would assume that the permit application would be confidential between the city and the applicant.
the applicant until it was approved, or at least, not approved, but at least able to be submitted.
For the record, Mr. McQuillan, any document that is submitted to any staff member, whether that document is complete, incomplete, is a public document and is subject to the public record. The matter of fact is, and I'll kindly ask Mr. Lambert and Mr. DeGroot to correct me, I believe the council has heard this before, the Historic Preservation Commission, for approximately the last four or so years, at virtually every one of their public meetings, has asked Mr. Lambert and others what the status is with respect to any redevelopment of the subject property. When the building permit, or excuse me, the demolition permit request was submitted, it was only appropriate to notify the commission, to notify the council, to notify the professional staff that said permit application has been filed. Period.
Okay, so the Historic Commission, Planning Commission, whatever it's called, did not have to wait till its next meeting to be informed by the city staff. It could be informed as soon as the permit request was submitted.
Yes, sir.
Was it also put on the city's website?
That the application had been submitted for demolition?
Yes.
No, sir.
Okay, so the only way a person would know that the permit application was submitted is if someone from Historic Planning Commission expressed that to someone else?
Yeah, or the city council, certainly.
Or the city council.
Yeah.
Someone from the city council or the Historic Planning Commission informed the applicant that something was submitted. Or someone they informed informed the applicant.
Or somebody could walk off the street. For example, this does occur, as surprising as it may sound, we have a number of residents who will visit City Hall frequently and ask of whether our planner, our community development, our economic development, Ms. Fornari, what the status of something is. It is their obligation, and I believe their responsibility, to share whatever information they have.
Okay.
So it could be as simple as, yes, something has been submitted, we have not yet reviewed its entirety, but yes, it has been submitted.
Okay, but you're not aware of anybody walking off the street?
I am aware of, with respect to this matter?
Yeah.
I am aware of frequent inquiries from multiple people, whether it be me attending public functions, whether it be Historic Preservation Commission members at public meetings, whether it be council members sending emails to myself, Mr. Lambert, Mr. DeGroot, or others, and, you know, whether it be through social media channels and you name it. The query and the curiosity of this community with respect to the fate of or the future of the Mill Race site has been top of mind for probably five years.
Okay.
And that's, I think, stands to reason.
And not to belabor the point, because it was an excellent explanation, and I thank you for that.
Certainly.
But again, you are not, on this particular permit, aware of anyone walking in off the street questioning a city planner or any city staff member about this permit application.
I am not, nor would it be regarding any application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? If not, we'll turn back to the council. City Council Alderman, we're gonna go to Burghardt first, since she has not yet spoken.
Well, I just wanted to point out, both Alderman Bruno and I do have pretty active Facebook pages, and I just checked, but Alderman Bruno did post about this demolition permit being requested right in December 2017. So it was public pretty quickly after it was... And that was something we were alerted to by the city administrator, because all of us have been interested in the history of Mill Rays, and that's probably one of the questions I get from residents the most. So I kind of thought that, I did a quick search, and you were active right after Christmas with that one. Thank you, that's it.
Anyone else besides what's-his-face over here, Bruno? Nobody? Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting with two points of order.
Yes, sir.
How does Alderman Kilburg's absence affect the vote tonight, if we decide to vote tonight?
It doesn't.
Mr. City Attorney, if you want to clarify, the short answer is it does not.
It does not. A supermajority still required seven votes in the affirmative, or seven votes to, I guess, adhere to the recommendation of the HBC.
But a supermajority of those present.
Supermajority of the council.
Of holding office, irrespective of whether they are present.
Correct.
In which case, it seems sensible to table this until Alderman Kilburg is present?
Is that a motion?
You can certainly make that a motion.
That's the weakest. Come on. Okay, I'm gonna be strong about this. Oh, you were gonna...
Well, you had a question, procedure?
I have a clarification question.
Your microphone, sir? Thank you.
I guess, did we just have a discussion about tabling? I think you and I had an exchange about tabling, waiting to see if the right numbers were there. Maybe you can refresh everybody with what the position has been?
Alderman Rodecky and I corresponded some time ago regarding whether or not we should, as a body, always ensure that we have a full complement of the council prior to deliberating, discussing, or deciding on, quote, significant issues. Is that the best way to describe it? My response to Alderman Rodecky was that I believe, correction, I know, that every council member here, including myself, knows when we meet. We meet every Monday night. It is our responsibility to be here every Monday night unless something comes up, and that happens regularly. I do not believe that we should be postponing meetings anymore should one alderman, two aldermen, not be able to join us. Historically speaking, no pun intended, we've implemented that policy before, and I have witnessed, and I wrote to Alderman Rodecky regarding this, that what we have experienced is some aldermen, respectfully, choosing to either not attend the meeting intentionally or unintentionally so as to steer a decision in a certain way. And I think that speaks ill of this body, I think it speaks ill of the council. So my position is this, and by all means, I invite the alderman to chime in. We know when we're supposed to be here, we know what the issues are, I trust we come prepared, and whether a council member can or cannot make it, that's up to the respective council members. I will not judge why someone is or is not present, but I don't believe we should hold up city business for their absence.
Are you still on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Fully appreciate that. I'm trying to contextualize that, given we are dealing with a point of supermajority. I think that unduly sways the burden or the impact of that absence. So I would still make a motion that we tabled this to the next regularly-scheduled council meeting.
A motion to table has been offered by Alderman Bruno. The motion to table does require a second.
May I...
You may not. You need to either vote to second the motion, or if there's a lack of a second, after the chair determines that lack, then that motion dies. The motion is dead. Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion similar to Alderman Bruno's to table the vote on this topic until the next council meeting that all 10 aldermen are present.
It's gotta be a date certain, because the next time everyone's all here may be next month. So it's gotta be a date certain to which you address the motion to table. I think that's what the spirit of Alderman Bruno's motion was, but it's gotta be a date certain.
So if we just gave a specific date, but two aldermen were not present that night?
That's a problem.
We could make another motion to extend to the next meeting?
Alderman, you can continue to... You could go week to week if you wanted to. If that were the collective wisdom of this council, I would suggest, respectfully, that's a procedural problem and a dynamic for governing that would be untenable, but that, again, is your call.
As we all know, this matter has to be discussed prior to, or excuse me, before a city council. So the body here has the right to offer a motion to continue to a future city council meeting, whether that meeting be the next regularly-scheduled meeting, which is May the 7th, or we can call for a special council meeting, that would also suffice. Alderman McGowan still has the floor.
I'm undecided now, so I guess I withdraw my suggested motion.
Alderman Ruby.
So just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, Alderman Kilburg's absence essentially is a no vote?
No. Alderman Kilburg's absence is simply an absence. His vote is not recorded, it'll be recorded as absent.
Okay, but we have to have seven affirmative votes?
That's correct.
So without him having a vote, there's no chance of his vote being affirmative?
That's true, but it's not recorded as a nay, it's recorded as an absent.
Okay, but as far as the getting to the affirmative...
The math is true, but I don't want anyone to assume that whether it be Alderman Kilburg or any other alderman...
No, I don't mean anything on him, I'm just...
Yeah, yeah, not being present is a no voter.
Math-wise, okay. So the numbers are not ever adjusted according to...
No, no, yeah, no.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Cummings.
I want to address one comment that was made during the commenting period about this being potentially illegal or something for the property owner and how bad it was for the property owners. We heard that argument, I understand that argument, and it is difficult for a staunch property owner rights person to agree with this. But I like this ordinance. I don't love it, but I like it. I think it respects both people, both groups, both groups of thought. We don't live on islands. We do have, what one person does does influence what other people do. And respectfully, I think this is a pretty good ordinance. I stand by the work that we did for 18 months. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno, oh, excuse me, Alderman Malaja, then Bruno.
Okay, so the one aspect of things tonight that I'm uncomfortable with remain the legalities of the process as followed. We are on ground here that we don't often find ourselves, as Mike pointed out, it's the second time in 38 years, or something like that. So I personally feel we have to proceed very carefully, and so I would like to make a motion to table this until May 7th, to give us time to meet with the attorneys and make sure that the process had all the integrity that's required by the ordinance.
Second.
A motion to table to May the 7th has been offered by Alderman Malaja, it's been seconded by Alderman Bruno. It's my understanding, no debate, is allowed. We simply take the roll. It is a roll-call vote, it is a simple majority to approve the motion as presented. Whenever the clerk is ready, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burghardt.
Nay.
Don Cummings.
Nay.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Craig Malaja.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Nay.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, would you like to explain that vote of five ayes and four nays?
Unbelievable. The motion passes, and the matter is continued until May 7th for consideration at that time. I would caution the council, to the extent that they think full attendance is required, there is no such requirement. I understand the alderman's motion, basis of which was to get more information and confer with council, which is perfectly fine. I would caution everyone, we are on the record now, and to please confine any further study to the materials you were given. I know that there were tours offered, which are perfectly fine, but extraneous conversation and sources of information other than the record, I would ask respectfully be declined.
We're at new business, ladies and gentlemen. From the audience, any new business comments, questions for the council? I would like to give a courtesy heads-up to all those joining us this evening and all those tuning in, and to the city council as well. Just earlier this afternoon, I confirmed with the Geneva High School girls varsity basketball coach that May 7th is the date that we will be celebrating their state championship. So I would strongly advise that prior to this discussion, there will be 30 minutes of other discussion taking place and celebration. So if you wanna... And we have a swearing-in of a new deputy fire chief, so if you want to... Battalion chief. Assume that we'll kick things off at 7:30. Enjoy your dinner somewhere here in Geneva. So... And if anyone else, new business comments or questions for the council? The motion to adjourn is in order. Motion by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.